We start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA cable TV in our order of business this evening. Call to order, agenda procedures, agenda review and adoption. Presentations, public comment, if there are any administrative items include the superintendent's update COVID-19, communication audit presentation, student activity account bank reconciliations, January 2021 through March 2021. Update on fees for nutrition extended day program and preschool. The superintendent's summative evaluation, assistant superintendent's update, warrant approvals, Kathy Bates. Approval of minutes including February 12th, 2021, minutes of March 18th, 2021, minutes of March 26th, 2021, April 1st, 2021, and April 9th, 2021. Acceptance of gifts and donations if there are any committee reports of activities, member updates, action items. And then we'll move to go into executive session under section 21A3 to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And not to return to open session. Ashland Educators Association ESP contract, nurses contract, administrative assistant contract, and Ashland Custodian and Maintenance Contract and the Chair so declares. So I will take attendance and ask you to just confirm that you're okay with the order of business this evening. I will start with you Kathy Bates.
Here and yes.
Paul Kendall?
Here and yes.
Mark Terry?
Here and yes.
And Aaron Williams, are you here? I don't see Aaron yet, so we do have a quorum, so we will get started with the order of business. I will start first by asking if there are any. Jim, there are no presentations, correct? Other than later on in the agenda, yeah. So I'm going to go right to public comment and ask if there's anybody here that is here to offer public comment. And then seeing none, I will go right to you Jim for the COVID-19 update, please.
Great, thank you. This is another week of being in person, full in person for all of our buildings, which has been great. Yesterday we had our first massive, if you will, pool testing process at the high school. And I certainly think I want to make sure that the community understands yesterday was a little novelty as well because we began AP exams. And because of the AP exams, we didn't actually call folks down for the testing. So next week it'll be a lot, it'll be a lot more fluid as well in terms of kids not being out of class that much. But because of the nature of the AP exams, we try not to disrupt the class by going over the intercom and calling groups of kids down at a time. In addition, we had about 200 students who had never actually gone through the process before. So teaching them exactly how to actually go through the swabbing and where to put the swab. Because even after five weeks or four weeks of doing this, we have some, some of our students still don't remember that they're in Pool A and have to put it in the A beaker or container. So sometimes reminding them is a challenge. So it was exciting. I know Maureen, Winsec and the nursing staff, Erin and Katie up at the high school, it was busy for sure. And a little stressful, but this morning I got a nice email from Maureen when I sent an email out that all pool tests came back negative. So well over 300 folks tested throughout the district. And you know, Maureen, that's a great way to wake up, a great email to wake up to in the morning. So, so the work was great. So that, that was good. Hopefully next week will be a little smoother. Let me share the, I did email this out to you because I wait till the last minute for the data on Thursdays. But let me share with you our current data that we put together our metric. As you can see, the cases again continue to decline dramatically, right? So we're level with last week, five cases, but down 31 over a 14 day period. Our incident rate is, has dropped dramatically to 3.6 per 100,000. That's our adjusted rate. At the state rate, it's 11. So with the state, that still puts us into the yellow category. But if it was adjusted, we're in that gray, full person, everyone in, working through it. The positivity rate continues to decline as well as across the state. The one thing I wanted to point out on this, as you know, last week, you know, and the week before we sent out the memo after break about close contacts. And that close contacts who are, you know, deemed close contacts of a positive in school no longer need to quarantine if everyone was masked. And so what that has, we've had two cases in the past day, yesterday and today. And what that has resulted in are eight students who were deemed close contacts. Actually, I got an email from Claudia right before we went on, I think it might be 10 now. But those students do not need to quarantine. So they're encouraged to be tested, but because everyone was wearing masks, they, they're allowed in school. So I just wanted to put that as a frame of reference. Those would be eight students that would be added to this APS quarantine list. If, if they were, if we were following the old process by DPH and the Department of Ed.
Jim, doesn't that presume that they're at least three feet away, right?
Correct, right. So we go through the process. Yeah, so between three and six feet, Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we go through the process identifying those students. And then if they were between that three and foot, six foot mark, letters are sent home to those families saying you would be deemed to close contact, but you don't have to quarantine.
And Jim, remind me the frequency of the pool testing and whether, you know, when we encourage people to get tested, whether signing up for that and participating in that, you know, is recommended.
Well, that's a good question, Paul, and we haven't gone down that road. We did it once at Mendez, but that was something we decided to do. On a, I don't want to say on a whim, but we just felt more comfortable because it was a whole class that we felt like we wanted to have an opportunity.
Right.
We have yet to roll it out to any of the other buildings. So we, but you know, Project Beacon is no longer open down on, on the Framingham side near Perrini. So finding places for our families to go and get tested is certainly becoming a challenge. I can let Ed or Audrey speak to that. But that being said, I mean, we are seeing really positive numbers here. And you know, I think everyone was pretty excited to get the pool test back yesterday of, I think it was 269 students. So that was great.
Yeah, just if there's a way to say, oh hey, we have, you know, 15 close contacts. If we can get them in that pool testing.
Yeah.
If they, if they're not at the high school, if there's a way to consider that without it being too cumbersome, it might be an efficient way to handle that.
It could, and what we might want to, we've got to consider from that end, Paul, is do we then test them, because we're only testing one day a week. So if it happens on a Tuesday, do we wait a full week to get them tested? Or do we figure out a way to connect with, with Concentric, who is our testing company in the lab and the, the courier to do it on another day? So there's some pieces.
I mean, in that case, you know, you wouldn't want them to get tested immediately anyway, right? So testing, testing the day after you were in contact with somebody is, is not going to be a very fruitful thing.
Could be eight to 10 days.
Right.
So.
That Project Beacon, they closed, but they're moving over to Framingham State, the parking lot over there. So I think there might be a delay of a week, but Ed and Audrey probably know that.
They're opening Monday, I believe.
Okay. So.
Is the concern that people who are close contacts are having trouble getting testing on their own?
It's not a concern, Mark, as much as it's not required.
Right.
We're still recommending, our letter is we recommend they get tested.
Okay.
And our concern was when Audrey and I spoke yesterday was, or Monday, hey, that, you know, it's closed down. The one, the Project Beacon one is currently closed down and what's next?
Go to CVS and get that done?
I don't know if it's for free or not at CVS or if it's.
Yeah, so a lot of the retailers, they're charging if you don't have symptoms.
Right.
Because their insurance won't pay for it unless they have symptoms.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why.
It's really the free testing issue.
Yeah, so it's more of, you know, the, the free testing has shifted away from testing to vaccinations, obviously, so.
A lot of those places are doing antigens and we don't accept the antigens. We're still asking them to get PCR. So parents are still confused when they're going to get tested, what they're actually getting, so. A little challenging there.
And I don't know how many, Audrey, do you know of the close contacts that we identified who were still in school that actually decided to go get tested, you know?
I don't think they're due to get tested yet.
Right, but are planning on it, I guess that's what I'm.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I didn't hear from anybody in terms of our close contacts at this point.
Okay.
Hawkinson does have a place where they do the PCR. One of the urgent care facilities over there.
So we are just, you know, we're trying to encourage folks, again, they don't have to do it, but we are encouraging it. So in essence, you know, again, next week, full in-person learning, it's going well, knock on wood. We have 28 days. Seniors have less than three weeks or just about three weeks left. And, and you know, the rest of the district is about 29 days, so.
Excellent, any other questions or comments on the chart? Or anything COVID related?
Ed, Audrey?
Tomorrow?
Yeah, I have something real quick.
Yeah, please, Ed.
Yeah, one more thing.
Okay, so just a quick couple of updates, everybody. So as you know, Pfizer was approved a week and a half or two weeks ago for 16 and 17 year olds. We are running that clinic this Saturday for 16 and 17 year olds at the Doubletree Hotel in Westboro. As part of our collaborative with the six other towns. We have a total right now of 693 kids signed up from all the towns. I just want to put this out, you know, I know people watch these meetings. We still, the states sent us additional doses because our clinic is so efficient. We now have 500 additional appointments available for this Saturday. If anybody, and we don't care if they're 16 to 17 year olds, even if it's their families that want to also get vaccinated, they are welcome to sign up. They can just go to vaxfinder.mass.gov and they'll be able to sign up for that clinic on Saturday. Also, we are anticipating that Pfizer either most likely Monday morning is supposed to have approval for 12 to 16 year old, 12 to 15 year olds. We are already gearing up for that in the event that happens. And our plan is if we get, if that goes through on Monday, we are going to plan a clinic in Westboro next Friday from 2:30 to 6:00. And we'll, we'll push that out next week, I'll work with Jim if that happens.
Excellent, Ed, are walk-ins accepted or is it all pre-registration?
No, walk-ins are, we now are accepting walk-ins also.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Looks good, okay, moving on. Next, the communication audit presentation. I guess just by way of, a little way of background on this. The school committee, if you've been tuning in for years, has been talking about communication and what tools we use and how to better reach people and having it as a goal for Jim. As one of his superintendent goals, and although it's an area where he's very strong and rated very highly, we've always been aware that we could, as a community, do better, at least better understand how we're doing and what we're using and whether there are other opportunities that we could take advantage of. So based on that, we hired the Donovan Group and Liam Goldrick came to town a few months ago and did a whirlwind. He's been spending a lot of time here. Mark and I and Jim have met with Liam several times, both independently and as a group. And he's met with many other stakeholders and he'll share the details of that with you. So Liam, thank you for all the work that you've done. And Liam will be presenting his findings now to the committee and the community.
All right, my pleasure, Lori. Great to be with all of you tonight, especially as a native of the Bay State. I just want to say really thank you for the opportunity to work with Ashland Public Schools on behalf of the Donovan Group. We're a national school communications firm and one of our specialties is auditing and helping, helping districts to kind of assess their communication past, present, but also help them improve in the future. So I know you've got a real busy agenda tonight. I have some slides I'm going to whip through pretty fast. I will then sort of focus on some of the recommendations from the audit report that hopefully you, you have a copy of and maybe had an opportunity to look through. And then obviously would be happy to take any questions from, from, from any of the committee members as well. So let me do a quick screen share here, make sure this is working the way it's supposed to. All right, everybody can see that, all right?
Yes.
Great, okay, okay, terrific. So yeah, quick overview of what I'll speak to tonight. I just want to talk a little bit about the audit, the communications audit process and the elements that make up the process. Quickly detail some of the findings that, that we discovered through our analysis. And then want to talk, you know, definitely for a few minutes about some of the recommendations we have for Ashland Public Schools going forward. So we, we engaged in a pretty quick process to meet this deadline, but we accomplished everything we set out to. It started with a late February engagement meeting with the district. As Lori mentioned, Lori, Mark and Jim and I met several occasions through the process to track progress and sort of check in on various details initially in March and then several times through the month of April. During those first couple of months, our team at the Donovan Group conducted audits of both the existing district website as well as the website that's slated to come online in the near future. According to the requirements of the, of the RFP, we also engaged in a number of interviews with stakeholders within the district and also within the Ashland community. We put a community survey into the field. It was in the field from March 17th through April 4th, I'll talk a little bit more about that. We ran two community forums on both April 12th and 14th that gave both staff members and community members an opportunity to engage in conversation about some of the issues and some of the questions that we put forward. I'll, I'll reference what those were. And then here we are tonight for the school committee presentation. So this was the postcard that we designed and circulated in the community to encourage community members to participate in the survey. The QR code took people directly to the survey site. And then we were able to analyze the data and I will again review that as we move forward here. The report you have in your hand is structured in a particular way and it basically follows this structure. You know, kind of an introduction to the report in terms of the purpose and a really broad set of findings. Some general observations we have through the communications sort of data collection and interview process we engaged in. And then we detail the community survey, the data we collected as part of that, findings and insights from the community forums, and then finally recommendations. In the appendices of the report, we list all the interview questions that I engaged with a number of the Ashland stakeholders. The website audit, those, both audits are included in the appendices of the audit report. And then the entirety of the community survey in terms of the questions and the, the options that respondents had were also, are also fully detailed in the report. You know, by and large, I said it was a pleasure to work with the district, but it's quite clear from all stakeholders that there's a tremendous amount of trust and goodwill that has been developed over time in the district. So I think that the district has a tremendous well of goodwill that it can draw upon moving forward. And I mean, to quote our report, we basically said that, you know, Ashland Public Schools has a reputation as a great school district that is continually working to get better. District leaders and staff have demonstrated a clear commitment to continuous improvement across a variety of areas, including communication and community engagement. That said, and sort of leading toward our recommendations, at the same time, you know, our analysis is the district would benefit from a more strategic approach to communication, one that allows it to engage its stakeholders more efficiently and intentionally. We also say that the district should also work to build capacity in a way that allows for more streamlined communication throughout the district and throughout all of its schools. In terms of our communication inventory, some of kind of the overarching current communication practices that we found were in place were pretty regular structured scheduled weekly email communications that, that went out not only from the schools, but also in the form of weekly superintendent updates from Jim. We note that there is a website in transition. I think, you know, issues with the current site have been identified internally. We noted some of those two in our audit and we know, we're happy to see that the district is moving in a direction to, you know, create a more user friendly, you know, differently designed website moving forward. The current social media presence the district has is primarily limited to Twitter at this point. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. We found that as this meeting will be tonight, available on, on WACA and YouTube, those are sources of APS video content. And then we noted that ASHPAC and some other groups I might mention of are some really key stakeholder groups in the community that can, you know, really sort of form a glue and a conduit for communications from, from community stakeholders, parents and families back, back and forth with the district. The interviews we engaged in surfaced some issues, again, pretty widespread praise for the overall communication practices the district has in place. Some felt that, that people did suffer from email fatigue, partially in part because of the COVID pandemic, but some suggested that that fatigue may have existed even prior to that in terms of sort of the number of emails that, that certain stakeholders, particularly parents, may receive from different sources within the district and its schools. You know, clearly a very strong engagement exists with parents and families, but there's definitely a sort of a thirst and an interest in trying to connect and broaden those connections with the broader community outside of, you know, sort of those immediate parents of school age children in Ashland. As well, there were some concerns raised about the need to do a better job of reaching out to new families. And we have some recommendations about how to pursue that. And then as sort of the quote earlier mentioned, it's sort of, there's this overarching need to deepen and standardize communication practices and expectations beyond the superintendent. I mean, Jim by and large was roundly praised for his commitment to transparency and communication. There were some thoughts that some of that may be a little uneven across the district, across all the schools, across all the classrooms, and there are some improvements that could be made there. And then finally, you know, telling the district story. This is an area where I think folks maybe felt that the district fell a little short as it was so dutiful and focused on communicating with families. This is not uncommon in education. I've worked in the education space for, you know, over 20 years. And, you know, I think sometimes educators can be somewhat bashful and they don't make the time to tout their successes and tell their story. And that's an important thing, you know, in this current, current age for, for public school districts to do. So we have some recommendations to encourage that practice. Very quickly on the community survey, 707 community members completed the survey. And by and large, the feedback we received through the surveys was overwhelmingly positive. There's a few bullets here on the page that showcase some of those results. Again, the vast majority closing in on 90% of respondents said they can get the information they need if they have questions or need more information. 87% strongly agree or agree they feel welcome in Ashland schools. And over 90% strongly agree or agree that they're satisfied generally with, with the district. The four questions we asked at the two community forums were these four, sort of just trying to get a sense of what people's overall experience was with, with communications from Ashland Public Schools. Two, asking for their thoughts and ideas about how the district could use communication to better engage more members of the community. Three, kind of a perception question, what are they, what's their sense of what makes Ashland Public Schools unique? And how can the district better convey that? And then fourth, going back to one of our findings, you know, what can the district do perhaps to do a better job of sharing sort of good news and successes? You know, and just quickly to sort of unpack some of that, I think people talked extensively in answer to question one about their satisfaction and their preference to receive a lot of communication via email. So, you know, they, they talked about it being overwhelming at times and they talked about maybe, you know, trying to find ways in terms of making the content more accessible, a little piffler and, you know, a little less, you know, less frequent if at all, if at all possible. You know, there were some equity concerns raised, particularly around new families. People wondering whether there were some issues with regard to email access or internet access in the homes. And just sort of reminding the district that they needed to do a better job in terms of ensuring that all their, all their families were being reached through all available channels. You know, I think on number two, a few of the ideas raised were, you know, some kind of old school tactics, postcard mailers, flyers that, that, that get out to, that get out to people and either redirect them to the, with website or, or to other district contacts. And partnerships is another idea that we'll, we'll talk about in the recommendation section. Number three, the ideas that people conveyed in the community forums were that Ashland was supportive, embraced diversity, student focused, self reflective, responsive to constituents. And, and they really praised both the district's overall COVID-19 leadership and, and the superintendent Adams as well. And then finally, on number four, I think some of the ideas people, people offered there was making maybe better use of, of earned media through local media sources, investigating the use of direct mail as appropriate. Maybe a contact form on the website where community members could, could reach out to folks within the district. And again, partnerships and possibly live streaming events once the pandemic is over and continuing that, that good practice. Okay, so there's two slides of recommendations. So let me talk a little bit about these, these two slides, because this is really the meat of our, of our findings. And then I'm happy to open it up to questions. You know, I think number one, as I indicated earlier, I think streamline, streamlining email communications is going to be important for a couple of reasons. One, because that really is folks' preferred channel of communications. And that's particularly true of existing parents and guardians of Ashland students. You know, people recognize that that's really an established practice in the district. They have a positive association with the emails and the email contact. And we felt that there are maybe some, some opportunities to make email communications more concise, maybe more pleasingly designed in some ways, incorporating graphics and other types of tools into the communications. Maybe some of the email communications can be better organized to enable people to, to access it. And then really, as you roll off the new website, you know, find an appropriate landing place where people can go to the website and access some of those more recent as well as historical communications that they may be searching for. Communication capacity, this is really sort of the how recommendation. How does the district sort of get to this sort of next stage? Sort of recognizing the tremendous amount of time that, that Jim spends as sort of the communication steward of the overall district. How can we sort of build that capacity and distribute that capacity across the enterprise? In this case, the school district, you know, and a couple of ways to do that, obviously, as some districts do, is to hire an employee whose job is, is either entirely or partially communication. Another possible approach is to bring in, is to bring in a communication firm like the Donovan Group works with districts around the country to provide some of that service on behalf of the district. That's something I, as I indicated to, you know, to Jim, Mark and Lori, something we'd be happy to talk with the district more about either, you know, in either channel. We've counseled districts in the past about, you know, how to hire an effective communications. Either, you know, in either channel, we've counseled districts in the past about, you know, how to hire an effective communications assistant or director. Likewise, you know, we're happy to talk about how a communication firm can kind of bring their their expertise to bear there as well. Number three, expanding the use of social media. Primarily given the the community survey indicated that Facebook is really the preferred social media channel for parents and and families and community members. You know, we strongly encourage the district to investigate establishing a presence on that on that social media network, pretty much as simple as that in terms of that recommendation. Partnerships is a really interesting question, and this is about kind of building the team to help the district communicate and tell its story. And there were a lot of really terrific ideas in terms of, you know, how to build partnerships in the community. And some of the ideas that surfaced were, you know, brokering partnerships or or kind of working arrangements with early childhood centers, healthcare establishments, senior centers, town government, the library. And some of those things you're already doing, and some of those things maybe have fallen by the wayside a little bit because of COVID. Likewise, there's there's a number of very active groups in the community that the district could benefit from striking up a stronger working relationship with. We mentioned Ash Pack, which is already in existence. Area is another group that seems to be connected particularly to some newer community members. And that might be a great way to sort of reach, reach some of those folks. The we're all in this together group. One of the community forum participants mentioned that they are in the business of sort of getting welcome packets to new members of the community. And there was sort of a, you know, kind of a question and an idea raised about, you know, how could the district maybe participate in that? And get some information about the district and its schools to some of those people. So interesting ideas there that are worth pursuing and considering. Again, I think one of the pain points that was raised, and I think a lot of the interviews as well as in the community forums was how can we kind of broaden the circle and increase the outreach to different members of the communities, both newer families as well as community members that are not directly connected to schools. And I think in terms of outreach to newer families, we really encourage the district to continue making materials and engagements available in multiple languages. That's really important. As well as to think about some of the outreach strategies around partnerships to reach some of these groups. One community forum member mentioned sort of the importance to recognize cultural differences. And he described himself as an immigrant and found that, you know, U S school districts and Ashland, you know, may take for granted that people know how American schools work. And when you're dealing with, you know, members of immigrant communities who have come from a different culture or a different country, sometimes you can't always assume that that's the case. So that's something to think about in terms of a welcome packet or just in terms of like a one on one a type of primer that might be something might be beneficial and welcoming to some newer members of your community. Finally, last page, as I mentioned, community members who are not parents of school age children. You know, thinking about different types of special events and outreach that can help welcome some of those people into your schools, especially once it's safe for for people to mingle back into schools again. Cultural opportunities, athletic opportunities, community education, recreation opportunities to get some of those community members connected to the schools and to visit and to actually see inside the schools. Telling the district's story, it's really about focusing more on on kind of marketing and and really kind of selling the district's brand. Sharing the news and successes that are true to the district, true to the schools, true to the students and staff. There's definitely a thirst in the community for people to find out more about those things. That's what they told us in the survey. And we even recommend something like a strategic video that could be featured on your website that sort of talks about the district's mission and talks about the district's successes in a different type of medium like a video, which can be very compelling and can and can kind of bring people to hear about that. Finally, not people talked about town hall meetings and how valuable that has been to them. And really kind of encouraging, expanding both in person access to those meetings going forward as well as thinking about continuing to make those types of meetings available in some type of an online format to allow people to participate from their homes who might not otherwise, you know, be be able to get there in person. That's pretty much the extent of where I am. I really appreciate your time. And as I mentioned, I'd be happy to clarify anything or take any questions you might you might have this evening.
Thank you, Liam. For everything, I am wondering if anybody on the committee has questions for Liam on either process or findings or both?
I have one, but I really would like to defer to Paul and Kathy and Erin if she's come on because I've had the opportunity to to talk with him a little before. I want to make sure other people kind of get the opportunity to ask their questions first if they have any.
No, go go ahead, Mark, as far as my concern.
Kathy?
Go ahead, Mark.
I think one of the things that I'm interested in, and Liam, we started our conversation sort of on this last week. But the, you know, I'm interested in the concept of partnerships and you gave some examples of different groups to which we have some, some of them we have relationships with now. And I think what I'm interested in is sort of what would be the goal of one of those? What do those partnerships look like when they're successful? Just as, you know, one illustration for us to kind of be able to think about that more critically.
Yeah, I mean, I I think it's a, you know, a couple of different things, Mark. I I think it's it's one, it's sort of the idea I kind of mentioned in the recommendations, which is kind of broadening your team, right? I mean, I think, you know, one thing a lot of enterprises and organizations do is they try to do a lot themselves. And I think one of the things that partnerships can do is it can really kind of help establish some emissaries for the Ashland Public Schools in the community. You know, one of the findings we we had in in our analysis was there's a really strong and vibrant kind of word of mouth network in Ashland. Did that really kind of, those results kind of jumped off the survey for us? So there's an informal network there, but I think formalizing partnerships can maybe sort of, you know, really help to solidify that. I think likewise, it gives people who may not be connected in organizations that may not be connected to the schools an opportunity to come in and bring their expertise. I know one, you know, one idea we had talked a little bit about was the notion of sort of health partnerships, right? And like one of the things I did in the past career is I did some policy work around kind of this coordinated school health concept, which involves kind of marrying, you know, schools and healthcare systems. And there's a lot of opportunities there and to actually do some real work beyond communications to be able to bring in healthcare professionals who are experts and work with school nurses and, you know, do dental clinics and mental health clinics and and staff and kind of inform wellness committees and, you know, help 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 schools deal with issues of nutrition. To go activity. So that's just, that's one of many possibilities. But but I think it's about building your team and sort of deepening the connections to do both do substantive work, but also to sort of help help tell the district's story out in the community through some of those groups, but right in person, but also, you know, leveraging those those organizations' communication networks too. And and helping to, you know, have yourself better represented in some of the conversations that they're already leading in your community or in the region.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
Yeah, I want to piggyback on what Mark was saying in more from a a structural perspective on that success and what does it, what does it mean? And and what does it look like on an ongoing basis? You talked about a kind of a, you know, healthcare one that's a one time thing, hey, but let's reach out and we made this connection. But I also want to make sure that, you know, like we have, we each have our liaisons to different groups in the community right now, right? And, you know, at the end of the day, you know, sometimes it feels like it's tokenism and 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 we're a mom liaison there, but I haven't really done much. And I want to make sure that if we make these connections, what what makes them successful? That we can sustain them even through the times where we're not doing those one off. And and how do we also drive the capacity of the district to do that? Because who makes those connections, right? We have Jim, we have Mike, we have our principals, but at some point we we don't have the capacity to effectively manage that those strategic partnerships. And is that the same role of a communications person? And and so I guess I asked a few questions there, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that's that's a good question, Paul, and it's really a kind of a question fundamentally about sort of capacity and follow through. And the answer is yes. I mean, a communications person could do some of that. I think some districts kind of envision an internal role when they exist as sort of a communication and kind of community partnerships role, a community relations role, right? I think sometimes you you can definitely connect that, you know, that responsibility under one individual. But I I think it's also just about, you know, being really clear about what the district ask is with regard to some of these partnerships, right? And like, you know, I'm thinking about it through sort of a communications lens right now. But when you have a partnership, you know, making sure there's sort of an ask for for content that the district can both can sort of highlight in terms of any work or connections that organization has with the district, but also asking out to say, you know, hey, we have some really, really critical information. We're looking to get out to community members, you know, we think you may have connection with. Would you mind, could you help us convey this information in your monthly newsletter, quarterly newsletter, on your website, through social media? So it's just being very clear, I think, from, you know, sort of from from above in your communication plan, in your strategic plan about, you know, what you can gain from some of those partnerships and then task whoever the district lead is emissary to those groups. You know, to sort of make those types of asks that are, you know, that are that are gonna, that are gonna help you move the needle forward.
Yeah. And how do you make sure that, you know, the the groups you're partnering with feel that there's a value to it as well and not just, hey, you have contacts, hey, can you do this for me?
Sure.
So to make sure it's a true a partnership, both feel it's valuable, right?
Yeah, I mean, I I think that's just about, you know, it's about honesty from the get go in terms of, you know, you're entering into a partnership presumably because there's a benefit to both both parties. And just being really clear, you know, about that, it's like, we'd like to, we'd like to bring your expertise into the school. We'd like, you know, we'd we'd like to, we'd like to build community partnerships generally, but we'd also like to, you know, we'd like to leverage community organizations to 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 help get, tell the story and really help, you know, tell community members, taxpayers, everybody know, you know, some of the, some of the great things that are happening in schools, which are of benefit, you know, to the to the collective.
And 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 just, I know we did this once, Jim. We had the the night where we had a meeting of of a lot of our community partners, right? And did that, did that come up in in the in the audit? And, you know, you talked to, talk to them about that and how we did it and whether there's, you know, I think it's something we should probably look after COVID to start happening, having again. But is there structural changes or effective changes to make that more effective? And I said, I don't know if this is the first time we've been hearing about that or not.
Yeah, it is first time. Yeah, because that was three years ago. Yeah.
Yeah. So so Liam, we we had a night where where Jim organized and invited, you know, partners that we we have and and got them all in the same room. And 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 a lot of time it was around, I think at the time to coordinate fundraising, different other things that were all going on because we're all competing for people's time in the community. And so it was about coordination more than anything else, I think, at the time. But I I think most people that attended that saw a value in it. And so do you know of any other other places that are doing something similar to that? Because that strikes me when we have this conversation is as something to 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 start back up.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. And I think, you know, I think that type of strategy is not only good from a partnership standpoint, but, you know, a similar type of strategy in terms of bringing in, you know, community members, but also, you know, parents and guardians who now may not be engaged, that you want to engage to try to find creative ways, you know, to bring them into the building, you know, and build things around, you know, culture or athletics or food. And sometimes it's just a matter of trying different things. It sounds like that event, you know, may have had some success and and there may be, it may be worth going back, you know, going back to and following up with some of those groups or maybe using, you know, again, once we're we're sort of on the safe side of things, you know, using a similar strategy to reach out to some newer groups that the district feels there may be a benefit to build a stronger, stronger connection with.
Yeah, and it seems like maybe even a like a higher level discussion first, and maybe it's at our retreat or maybe it's sooner if we want to do, you know, get the ball rolling in the next whatever three meetings that we might have left before the academic year is over. But of, you know, we've named some groups that have shown an interest in communicating with us because they did show up to the two webinars that you offered. And they've been engaged with us. They've come to some of our meetings. But I think we also have to identify for ourselves, you know, are we partnering with every group out there? Is it a certain small group and how do we identify? Is it everybody? Is it nobody? You know, there's, I think there's another discussion to have about what that looks like and who who's part of it and and why and.
Yeah, that that's right, Lori. And I think being really clear about, you know, your ask or your kind of your entree to the groups, but then also being prepared. You know, if it's a question of, you know, providing them some content or information that they can share, you know, you have to then have that ready to be able to share, right? It it could be as, it could be as simple as having, you know, some social media, a tweet drafted or a Facebook post drafted or, you know, hey, we're gonna put this up on Tuesday, would you mind sharing this? You know, because it, you know, it would be valuable to us and we think it would be of interest to your, you know, your, your partners or your your constituents, your members. You know, so having sort of your ducks in a row and just being really strategic about it, right? Because a lot of this can be busy work. And if it's not, if you're not following through and you're not being really dutiful about it, it can, you can have a lot of false starts. And that's not, you know, that's not the efficiency I think we're, you know, you're all looking for in terms of being really purposeful and strategic about communication, pushing, pushing forward and building on the successes you've got.
Other questions or comments for Liam?
My, my comment is maybe more for the group, the committee than maybe Liam, but it it seeming like we would need a point person, you know, maybe need to hire someone, a part time person or full time. But that's something, you know, the group and Jim and we can talk about later. You know, if we want to be dutiful about it, like Liam is saying, in follow through, I think we need a dedicated person to do that.
Right. And maybe the first discussion and and you all can chime in again, whether you think if this is more of a retreat style conversation or whether it's something we can start talking about over the next few meetings. But I think first we have to identify of the recommendations, which ones are priorities for us. And then take a look at, you know, whether an outside person would be the best person to to manage those priorities. Are we, are we taking on all the recommendations or just some of them? And then that will determine how much of a job it is and whether it's something that could split with a grant writer like we talked about in the past. I mean, I think there's some things that we need to narrow down before we can tell the person what we're expecting. So I'm just looking for input on whether you all wanted to start talking about this soon or whether you want to do it in August.
To me, it sounds like a summer, a summer workshop agenda item, but.
Yeah, I guess to me, it feels like I'm trying to figure out which is the the cart, which is the horse. This kind of issue, I mean, my my feeling is that to some degree we need to know what we would want before we figure out who's going to do what. On the other hand, I think there's value in having somebody who's in the communication sphere help us think about what's really involved in these things and make that strategic decision. And I don't know if that means sort of engaging Liam's firm further to sort of help talk through those types of issues as a part of a strategic discussion. Or, you know, we started, excuse me, we started talking about a communications related position in the budget back in January or whenever it was. And even to some degree before that, and, you know, I believe that position was in the final budget. Yeah, but I think we do need to define it a little better. And I certainly don't want to go out and say, let's move forward with hiring the capacity and then find out we hired a person for the wrong thing, you know, a person with the skill set that's not what we decided is of strategic importance. So that's why I say I'm a little, I'm struggling a little bit with which one comes first. But I do think it's a, the strategic aspect of it feels like a more substantive conversation than we would have in a typical meeting. And from that perspective, one itself more to a summer retreat.
I fully agree with you, Mark.
And have you thought about this? I mean, in terms of when you would want to find a person, if that's where we were headed? And have you thought about this? I mean, in terms of when you would want to find a person, if that's where we were headed? Have you thought about timing?
I think it's actually, to me, it's a perfect summer retreat conversation. We have, I mean, I'm just thinking logistically, over the next three meetings, which we have for the remainder of the year, we have school improvement plans and handbooks and a lot of other topics coming forward that will take up time and attention. And I I think when I think about the summer retreat, communication is, you know, one of the larger components of what we need to be discussing. And I I think boiling it down to Mark, to your point, on what is it we're looking for and how or who are we looking for? It's more of a strategic conversation than a typical school committee meeting.
Yeah, but I I think there's one component of Mark said that I think is is a little different, right? In that this group, that we might benefit from bringing someone on board, having them be part of a conversation. So if we know we want the position and having, it's it's kind of like, I do this all the time at work, people want me to put something together. And I'm like, well, I want the people that are going to be using this and needing to operate it to be part of my conversation when I design something at work. And so, you know, maybe it's uh something where we need to decide, are we going forward with something? Do we think we need the capacity and have the budget to hire someone? And then potentially, can hey, can we do that on our own? Do we need the Donovan's group's help to find that right fit? Because I don't, I don't think it, we didn't pick the right person if they can't fulfill whatever role we're gonna need, whether, you know. So we we chose the wrong person if they can't adapt and to whatever communication we decide on. And quite frankly, they should be helping in a similar way that Liam is, that this is what they do. It shouldn't be some intern that just, you know, intern style that just graduated from school and knows how to use social media. That's, we don't need somebody just to, hey, Jim wrote this, go out and put and post it. That that's not a position I don't think that adds lends too much value. So I think it might be, you know, and that's where I'm like, okay, when should we do what? Because to have a substantive conversation without that person at the table, how far are we getting? And then we seem like we've already decided something, but then we bring somebody on, they're like, well, hold on a second. What about all these other things? And we're rehashing it. So I I don't know the right way. But I think what Mark mentioned is a good point in that, you know, if we decide that is something we need and want and will do, do we start that process with the help of, because we don't necessarily need to know the end state, we just need the right person. I don't think the right, I think the right person can help us figure that out as opposed to, I don't, like I said, I don't, we we hired the wrong person. If we say we want this and they can't do it.
So this is what I'm thinking. I I appreciate Paul's thought process as well. It it seems like we could do something to move this forward within the scope of our next three meetings. But that might be, I'm really talking about, you know, with Liam or whoever. I I don't know whether we're gonna hit any kind of procurement issues in terms of who we work with on this. But maybe we have a conversation at one of our remaining meetings about what's the the scope of the work? How can Liam or some firm like his? But no, no criticism on you, Liam. It's just, I always worry about procurement stuff and exactly, no idea what that would cost us. But, you know, to think about, okay, what's this gonna cost? What would we be looking for in terms of guidance for that next step? And really, the idea of being to invite that person to our retreat in August, I think we've got the date set to be a part of that dialogue then. But it does allow us to kind of put those places, pieces in motion to be thinking about if we want to work with somebody to help us think about this more strategically and start implementation. Thinking about capacity building, I heard Liam say that that's one of the things that they offer some support on. It seems like that's a way to sort of get our ducks in a row so we can really be productive over the summer.
If it's helpful at all, Mark, I mean, you know, we we are happy to offer some follow up consultation, you know, out of this report. So don't feel like it's a procurement issue. I mean, obviously, if you want, you know, if you want a month of our time, that's a different issue. But if it's just, if it's sort of consultation in terms of, you know, thinking about a job, a job description, just thinking about the kind of follow through on specific recommendations, we're avail, we're available to Ashland Public Schools for that purpose. So, you know, just don't feel like, you you know, I'll never pick, I'll never pick up the phone again if you reach out and say, hey, could you help us with a couple of things? We're, we'll be here to support, you know, you moving this, moving this report forward. So.
Yeah, and I I appreciate the offer. Maybe what we should can have is just the conversation about what kind of support do we think we need? Reach out to Liam and say, is this something that you might be able to help us with as being a part of a conversation in August? And at least kind of know what we need to know, you know, it feels like that's where we're at is, you know, how we, as a as a group of five school committee members and a couple of administrators can look at this list and say, perhaps, yeah, it all makes sense, we should do all of it. But to me, like, expanding use of social media is, okay, what does that really look like, right? I don't know that. And so.
That's a conversation.
Yeah, it feels like it's a lengthier strategic conversation and and that we need to have that conversation, be able to lead to who's gonna do it. And if Liam is able to offer some of that insight to further conversation over the summer, that's great. And it's free even better.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, do we think that, you know, Liam's obviously hearing this, Jim's, you know, we're hearing this. If having them have some further conversation and and Liam offering his input on to potential next steps and running that through Jim to see if Jim mulls it over and says, hey, you know what? We definitely want to move this forward, let's get consensus from the group. And then, you know, is it, is it Liam or consulting from like that at a retreat? Or is it, hey, let's move to try to find somebody to hire someone with with somebody's help and doing that? And just figuring out what, make a, getting a recommendation from Jim, because he knows the capacity of the district a lot better than than all of us, obviously, the, and who might be able to help with different things. But I don't know if I'm hearing what I've heard for the last year to when we've been talking about this is that we really don't have the capacity to to effectively do this. And you, it's one thing to go and do it. If you don't do it right, you're you're probably taking steps back because you're doing something outside of current pre people's comfort zones. You know, you start a Facebook page, right? You mess that up, you get it all screwed up, it gets hacked, somebody didn't know how to do things right. And it's actually a negative as opposed to getting, doing it right. If you're not, we're not gonna do it right, I'm concerned we're, you know, doing it wrong.
Well, why don't we let either Jim talk to Liam or, you know, after this meeting, the conversations in agenda planning can determine what will come on for the next meeting or the meeting after that in terms of whether we're looking for approval to do the job search. But it looks like, at least for for today, we can end it here and then let some of those conversations take place and bring it back to the group when we have some kind of proposal. How does that sound? And proposal meaning whether or not, you know, we find the person and then do the planning with them at our meeting or whether we do the planning and then take the next step.
Liam, I will, I will be in touch in the next day or two with you.
Okay, that sounds great.
Strategize our.
Like a plan?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sounds great, Jim.
Thank you, Liam.
Thank you, Liam, for everything.
My pleasure. Thanks for, thanks for all your time tonight. And yeah, let let us know how we can help moving forward too. All right, well, good luck in your work.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the Student Activity Account Bank Reconciliations, January twenty twenty one to March twenty twenty one. Is that you, Chris? Are you here? Yeah?
Yep, I'm here. How are you?
Hi.
Yep, so this is the quarterly reconciliations. I just see a number two on the on your packet on each of the files. I looked at it monthly, which is why they have me just, you know, sign monthly. I've signed off on each of the quarterly recons. I just found it to be more efficient, you know. I like looking at it monthly. So, you know, I have all the packets, you know, hard copies that I sign throughout the month. Kelly signed off and each of the principals off the reconciliations. You know, I didn't see anything out of the ordinary, everything looked uh looked good from my perspective, looking at the the bank accounts versus our internal accounting system versus uh the QuickBooks accounts that we uh we use.
Does anybody have any questions for Chris on that or a motion? I'm not hearing any questions. So if somebody wants to make the motion to accept the reconciliations from January twenty twenty one to March twenty twenty one, I'll take it.
I'll I'll move to approve the FY twenty one Student Activities Account Bank Reconciliations for the period January first, twenty twenty one to March thirty first, twenty twenty one, as presented.
Do we have a second?
I can.
Thank you, Kathy and Mark. All in favor, Mark?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
An eye for me as well. That passes. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. And then we have an update on fees and we'll start first with nutrition. So Lisa, let me find you. There you are. Hi, Lisa.
How are you?
Good, thanks. How are you?
I'm doing great. I'm doing great. Thank you. Well, it's very easy for me to say we are not planning on an increase because we are not going to have to have our students pay for meals again next year. I was really excited to find out that the waiver has been extended. We will be, currently, we're under what's called the Seamless Summer Option, which allows us to feed all our students at no cost, a breakfast and lunch each day. And we're still doing our remote meals, which we will continue to do. We'll continue the remote service through the summer and will also be servicing Dr. Kyra's program. And it will all be funded through the USDA.
That is great news. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that?
Lunch for every student?
Yeah, just as we're doing this year, this year, it's it's been.
It's amazing.
Breakfast, yeah. And we've been able to cover that. And another thing we were able to do this year that we're very excited about was we've been able to help out the Extended Day Program with their snacks that they do for the students. Through our program, we will be able to get reimbursement for that program as well. Because the way it's looked at now, and I don't want to go into a whole long thing about how the program, the National School Lunch Program works, but you all know how we had free, reduced and paid students before. And just like with a lot of the grants in the district and everything, a lot of things are geared towards districts that have at least fifty percent free or reduced students. And Ashland doesn't have that. But now, because everyone's considered free, everyone's considered free. So this, there has always been an after school snack program, but Ashland never qualified for it because we don't meet that threshold of fifty percent free or reduced. So when I heard about it this year, that waiver came through, I think, October or November. I was really excited to be able to call Melissa and say, hey, we can take advantage of this and and help out that program as well. So no increases next year.
Good news, all of you. Thank you so much.
I I have I have a secondary question. Maybe I just never heard her referred to that. What's Dr. Kyra's program?
Oh, I'm sorry, the Summer Summer Learning Academy. I don't know if that's the correct term for it.
Okay.
It'll be coming down the pipeline for you to to hear about soon.
I I had actually mentioned it a little while back.
Yeah.
Program that we're gonna be running this summer to make sure that our students who had have had some difficulty during the the COVID, to help help them out and make sure we're we're providing a good service for these kids. Okay, great.
Thank you, Lisa, for everything that you and your staff have done to make sure that everybody has been fed throughout this pandemic. You guys have worked really hard and I'm sure you've made a lot of people very happy. Thank you.
Well, thanks. I know my staff, they really deserve a lot of credit because they have been working through vacations, through holidays to make sure that our our kids are taken care of. They've done an amazing job. I'm really proud of all of them.
Well, we're, we're really appreciative of all of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion. We're not changing anything.
No.
Okay. Next up then for Extended Day, Melissa, hello? You're on mute.
Okay, you are. Hi. Hi, thanks for letting me be here tonight. And before we talk about the tuitions for Extended Day, I'd just like to read a letter that Superintendent Adams has given me permission to read. He's already seen a copy of it. I'm not sure if the school committee has. Says, Dear Superintendent Adams and members of the school committee, is with very mixed feelings that I submit this letter of retirement and resignation of my position as the Director of the Ashland Extended Day Program for the Ashland Public Schools, effective December thirty first, twenty twenty one. I cannot think of a better way to have spent the last thirty two years of my teaching career than having served the students and families of Ashland. I'm humbled to think back over these years that the unwavering support I received and the faith that was put in me by the Parent Advisory Board, Superintendent Ruthfield, the School Committee and the APS community, as well as all the successive administrations up to and especially including all of you. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the hundreds of staff members who have contributed to the development and progress of the Extended Day Program, the parents who entrusted their most precious gifts to our care, and the students who brought their enthusiasm and wonder each and every day. I particularly appreciate the generous spirit that families have shown to us that has navigated the various challenges of creating a brand new program, expanding it to meet growing needs, all the way to today's challenges of providing a program of excellence despite the current pandemic. The success of EDP did not happen in a vacuum, and I know that I stand on the shoulders of many people who have worked behind the scenes giving advice, time and talent without any expectation of recognition. Some of those who come to mind are the members of the business office, the IT department, custodial and maintenance staff, nutrition services and the administrative assistants in each building. Without the help of these and countless others, I know that EDP would not be the program it is within the Ashland Public Schools. As I imagine what has come for EDP, I'm excited and confident that what has been started and carrying on becoming even bigger and better as the next generation steps forward, never forgetting that it takes a village and we are that village.
And just so we're clear, I didn't share it because I didn't accept it.
I was just gonna say, what do you expect us to say to that?
Melissa, are you leaving us?
You're jumping ship before we have a new building? Come on.
Give her some credit. Right. Decades of your time to this district have been very much appreciated by everybody. And that that Extended Day Program, I'm I'm certain that there's none other like it anywhere. And that's because of you. So you've just been tremendous in lots of different ways and you will be missed and we're not gonna say goodbye yet. But certainly, that that news is is definitely happy for you, but it's going to be a tremendous loss for everybody here. Yeah. And then, and for those of you who don't know, Melissa is the reason why my daughter is a teacher. So I I personally owe her a chance meeting with my daughter, sent her towards her career, which she loves. So I especially personally owe a debt of gratitude to you. But the district just would not be what it is without everything that you've done. And I'm gonna stop there because there will be other opportunities for us to to shower you with love and appreciation. But now give us the, you're now tell us about the fees being raised.
I know. So it it's been a tough year financially, as you can imagine, because with the remote learning, we had greatly reduced enrollment. So our budget has has taken a huge hit. So in order for us to be able to sustain the program, the Parent Advisory Board authorized in a slight increase in tuition. But we are still, despite that, the lowest after school program in Ashland or any of the surrounding communities. I did extensive surveys with all of the towns within a very large radius. And we are without doubt the lowest in any of the towns. We continue to offer a sibling discount and we also fund our own financial aid program for families that need it. So it it's it's a balancing act and we will end the year in the black. So I'm happy about that. And some of the credit for that does go to nutrition services. And I appreciate Lisa bringing up the fact that she got the waiver for us because that alone is going to save our program this year approximately ten thousand dollars. And I would imagine that next year it could save our program approximately thirty thousand dollars. So that alone is going to really help, help us to build back where we need to be to have a viable program. So that alone is going to really help, help us to build back where we need to be to have a viable program.
Does anybody have any questions about that or comments? And again, Melissa, I mean, I can say, you know, I think it's my eleventh year, and you know, you present every year, and there have been so many meetings when I just can't even believe that you're not asking for anything to be, to be raised. I mean, you've run that program so efficiently, and I know for a fact that you don't ask for anything unless it's it's necessary to keep the program going. So with that context, I mean, really, you have just been super efficient and hardly asked for anything in my time that I've been here, so I certainly support your request.
I think this might be the second time in eleven years. And by the COVID, it wouldn't be necessary, but we need to be sure that we can sustain ourselves and not be a burden to the school.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, this is my sixth year, going on sixth year, and I think this is the first time in my tenure you've asked for an increase.
Second, I thought there was one a couple of years ago, but either way, it's not often.
I mean, I know there have been times you walk out of the room, and I might even have said it to Jim, like, how does she do that? You know, and it's just remarkable. And like you said, even today with this request, still being, being the lowest, but providing probably the best program and best value anywhere. So I just wanted to share that context because, you know, you haven't had to make that request, other than, I guess, once in eleven years before today.
So I think finishing in the black on a year like this, you know, is amazing, right? You've basically been completely, you'd say you've been kneecapped, you've been, you've been cut out at the waist, right?
I had a lot of sleepless nights.
So that's, that's pretty incredible, and kudos to you for being able to, you know, only be asking a little bit and be able to finish in the black this year. So that's incredible.
Thank you.
Anybody else have comments or questions about it?
Whether she's gonna stay on my, my building committee or not, but.
We'll talk later.
I guess we don't need that office space that we've
Hey, hey, hey.
Whoa.
You know, it's Paul.
Yeah. All right, who's got the motion?
We don't, actually, I don't think we need, because the advisory
Okay.
Possible for that, so.
Okay.
I just want the update to come to you.
Thank you. And then preschool. Sarah, hello.
Hi, everyone. How are you? We worked this year, this academic year of twenty twenty one on a modified program, four days in person, and we adjusted our tuition accordingly to support this current school year. So as we look to registration for next year, we are planning for a full return to our programming. So we are not changing our rates. We're going back to the rates that were established for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. And we've provided that to the school committee. It's also been posted since the first of the year, and we've started our registration process now for our families, and that's posted as well on the new website. So that's there for families as we continue to do enrollment throughout the spring.
Is it a rolling process, Sarah, or is there like a day of?
So typically, we fill like within two days, and we give priority to our currently enrolled families and then open it up to new. But this year, due to COVID, there's still a lot of families that are just unsure about what the fall will look like. So we are kind of taking a wait list, seeing how things change, and, you know, trying to provide opportunities for as many families to fill in if their first choice isn't available, if a half-day session is and whatnot. So we're, I think we're close to like ninety-five percent full, and we might have some change over the summer due to family dynamics if people are going back to work or that sort of thing. But it's looking very good for September.
Excellent.
And fingers crossed we'll be back to normal. We're close to it.
Sarah, what is your schedule? Is it five days a week? Because when my kids went there, I thought I had a choice of three days or two days or something like that. Has that changed? That's changed?
Yeah, so that's changed over the last three years since I became the preschool director, just for the consistency of curriculum and programming for students. We still have half-day sessions for three-year-olds. They go Monday through Thursday in the morning. And then we have half-day programming for four-year-olds in the afternoon, which is five days a week. And then we have three full-day classes.
A lot, a lot has changed since my kids went through.
Still the same.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? And do we need a motion for that?
No change. No change.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. All right. Superintendent's summative evaluation. So you guys know that we, I've shared with you before, actually pretty recently when we did the mid-year two weeks ago. About the process, we adopt the superintendent evaluation process. There are several things that happen throughout the year. We formulate goals in the fall. We do a check-in mid-year or soon thereafter, hopefully. And at the end of the year, we do the final evaluation that all of you spend a lot of time on and that we compile, and then that factors into Jim's overall rating and connected to his contract and so forth. So we do try in years when the when there's a contested school committee election and the board may or may not change, we need to get the evaluation done prior to that so that the committee members that have been working with Jim are sure to be involved in the evaluation process. So it may seem a little rushed because in the past few years, we've been able to extend it a little bit because we haven't had any, any challenges on school committee. But this year, we want to make sure that we get it in, in the right timeframe. So that's why we're doing it now, and we're adding another meeting next week on May eleventh for the findings. So Jim's going to present to us and give us some more information, but committee members, what you all need to know is that you don't have the usual two weeks to get it back to me. You have until, hopefully, you could get it to me by Monday morning so that I'm not scrambling on Tuesday. It does take some time to get a cohesive evaluation put together and getting one voice that expresses all of our thoughts about, about Jim's performance. So Monday morning at the latest, I have one already. Thank you. You know who you are. And I will turn it over to you, Jim, to fill the committee in on where you're at with your goals and so forth.
Sure. So I think, as you said, Lori, it's only been a few weeks, right, since the mid-cycle review? So when we looked at all of the, the goals, the four goals that we set for the beginning of the year, not much has changed, if anything. So what I did share with you was the exact same document with regard to the goal, whether the key action items were met, or what benchmarks were met, what were not. So what I will do next week as well, I will provide you a narrative. I'll provide a narrative of my own self-reflection as to how I met or didn't meet the goals. And I stated that in the mid-cycle review, there are a couple here that are going to be long-lasting, right? In terms of, of the communication, while we, we met the communication goal in terms of the audit, there's still more to do with that, right? That's, that's ongoing moving forward. There's, there's more to look at when it comes to the the diversity of our, our text, our people, our dealing with our anti-racist education. You know, and that's ongoing as well. But there are things we've done this year, which I shared before. Again, I think it's important that, that we all understand it is a shorter timeframe than typical, just because of a contested race, and I apologize for that, but that is what it is. So we need to get it done by next Tuesday, is that what we said, Lori? The eleventh? So, so there's really not, I mean, nothing, you've done this process before. I've shared that if, for anyone who's watching, you know, there's a evaluation process that's set forth by the Department of Education, specifically relates to superintendents or administrators. And there's a, there's a form that has to be filled out, and then that will be shared with Lori from all the other school committee members, and she compiles one final document, and which is used for my evaluation that gets reported to the state.
Now, Jim, I don't know if this has changed on your end since COVID, but in the past, when there was no COVID, the superintendent would keep binders of evidence, and committee members would go to your office to review them. What are you thinking for that process? Are there binders? And, and do we want to do that? And or is there information you want to send to us by email? How do you want to do it?
What I would recommend, I mean, Karen, I don't know if she's still on, I know her name's here, but I don't know, she usually would keep a binder or a a box of items, right, as we go through the year. What I'm saying is I've, I've written on the on the, as part of evidence, the benchmarks that were met and how they were met. So if you want something specific, if you see something as you're going through it, and you're, and you're like, hey, Jim, I wonder, could you provide evidence of this? Send me an email, and I will then provide you evidence of X. It'll just be easier that way. We don't, I don't think, we didn't keep that same you know, box behind Karen's desk.
Right.
Right, so.
Right. Okay, so as everyone understands, if you want some backup for some of your findings, go directly to Jim and he'll provide you with what you need.
And Jim, did you say you're gonna, you're gonna write like a summary of what you've done? You're gonna send that out to us, or?
Jimmy, you just muted yourself instead of unmuted.
He's joking.
I will, I will have my own narrative, Kathy, when, when, before Lori presents the findings.
Oh, next week you'll, you'll present that at our meeting. Oh, I thought you were gonna send that to us.
No, I mean, I, I mean, I can do that, for sure.
That's okay.
It's my own reflection on
Oh, yeah. No, I got it.
Where I think I am.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions or concerns about that process? Everyone understands the process and the timing and all of that? Excellent. Thank you. Okay, Kathy, do you have any warrant approvals?
I do, but are you skipping over Mike?
I don't know. Did I skip over you, Mike? Yeah, I'm sorry.
We have something this week that I wanted to share, so.
I always miss at least one thing every agenda. It wouldn't be like a normal meeting if I didn't mess up somewhere. Go ahead.
So we have our MCAS starting next week at Mendez, so our students will be, in grades three, four, and five, will be participating in MCAS, and that will also be happening in grade six through eight and at the high school, you know, leading into June. So that is, is coming up. Also, our final professional learning day of the year will take place on May fourteenth. For primarily, that's going to be building base, but we still are continuing our work with our anti-racist facilitators who are helping us at the high school through their facilitation with the CARES team. And Claire Landergan will continue her work with our elementary teachers and staff in regards to the implementation of our Lucy Cawkins unit. The other thing I did want to share is a really heartwarming story that was shared with me that is directly related to the success that we're having right now with Lucy Cawkins. And if you'll bear with me, just very quickly, I wanted to read a message that was sent to me by one of our kindergarten teachers, Kristy Corbin, and she gave me permission to share this regarding a story of one of her students. And it also highlights, you know, the, the impact that the Lucy Cawkins style is having on our teachers and ultimately the children. Lucy Cawkins instructs the students to not just wish problems away, instead write them away. It really empowers them to see their voice as a tool to share their opinion and change things. In the Remote Learning Academy, we started by having the students make signs or write letters to people in their home. They wrote things like, put the remote back, keep things off the couch so I can sit, help me clean my desk, please fill the water pitcher when you use it, et cetera. We then asked them to look outside their home. Some wrote about cars driving too fast in the street, asking the sanitation worker not to put trash cans in the street. And one of my students, Aditya, wrote about dog waste in the neighborhood. The Kindergarten Remote Learning Academy encouraged students to get their letters into the right hands by giving them envelopes and stamps. Aditya's parents helped him get his letter to his building superintendent. The gentleman wrote him back and said he would get to work on fixing this problem. He thanked him for his letter and kindly commented that he would see him while he rides his bike in the complex. Such a great surprise to see that it resulted in a new dog waste station in their complex. As the unit continued, we tied it into Earth Day, so we focused on looking for ways to improve our home, neighborhood, community, and/or town. We talked about saving energy, water, planting trees, and recycling. Many of the students' stories and how-to books are priceless. We have them publish their work by videoing themselves in seesaw. Some students added their own statements at the end. Their passion was just what Lucy Cawkins suggests in her anchors chart. Show emotion. And these kids delivered. I was hesitant about teaching Lucy Cawkins this year with limited training because of COVID and being a remote teacher, but I see its benefits. I'm excited to get back to the classroom next year in person and see it reap even more benefits for my students. I just thought that was a great story. I thought it was worth sharing. I'm so proud of Aditya. And it's just, just a wonderful example of how the work that our students do in school can also be directly related to our community. I will email along to you all a wonderful picture that we shared to me from Aditya's parents of him in front of the dog waste station that really was put in place because of his writing. And I also have a copy of his writing assignment to share with you as well.
Yeah, we'd love to have that.
Thanks for sharing that, Mike.
Yeah, thanks. And thanks to Ms. C for sharing it with you, so you could share it with us.
Great story. Thank you. Okay, is that it, Mike? Did you have anything else? Yeah, okay.
Can I ask a quick question on Mike?
Of course.
So just, do you have any like updates on like the summer, what, what your, your plans for the summer, the summer program, or what it's like?
So our summer program, we, we have identified students that we are inviting to, to the camp. I'm not even calling it a camp. It's like a summer learning academy. So I've worked with the principals, and they've identified students who are in need of some additional support. We're primarily focused on students who are receiving literacy support and, and math support through our Title I program. So these students are being invited in. It's going to be a six-week-long program that will go five days a week. And we will be offering transportation and, you know, through the, through Lisa's department, we're going to be offering some, some food as well. I will be working closely with Ms. Silva's summer program to, to help to at times have some collaboration between teachers. And right now, we're just working on making sure we have enough staffing and finalizing the students that will be taking part.
Great. Thanks, Mike. I do have warrants for you. All right. Are you ready for me, Lori? Between April sixteenth, twenty twenty one, and May sixth, twenty twenty one, I, Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of three hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred ten dollars and seventy-four cents. This includes general fund expenses of one hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents and revolving expenses of one hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Grant expenses of forty thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-four cents in meals, tax expenses of twenty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. I also signed off on one million, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred forty-seven thou, no, wait, sorry. Let me start again. One million, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents of payroll. It's a lot of numbers.
Thank you, Kathy. All right. Well, next up, a lot of minutes. So we have February twelfth, twenty twenty one, March eighteenth, twenty twenty one, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty one, April one, twenty twenty one, April nine, twenty twenty one. I think most of them came in the packet, and I believe there was one that Karen forwarded along. So hopefully you guys have them. And why don't we just start at the top? Does anybody have anything on February twelfth, twenty twenty one?
No.
Okay, seeing nothing. You have a motion to accept the minutes of February twenty twenty one?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
On favor, Aaron?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
An eye for me, March 18th, 2021? Take a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
On favor, Kathy?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
And I for me, March 26th, 2021. Any issues?
Nope.
Take a motion?
Move to approve, March 26th minutes.
I'll second.
On favor, Kathy?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
And I for me, April 1st, anybody?
Nope.
Take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Kathy?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
And I, and finally, April 9th?
I just have one thing on April 9th. I'm just wondering, when we did start times for the 2021, 2022 school year, there's just one motion saying, motion to set the start time for the Ashland Middle School. Are we supposed to have a motion for each school start time? Not just the middle school? That's all I'm wondering.
Oh, we just did that one because it was different from our.
So we didn't need to have the other ones on there? Okay.
Not if they didn't.
Okay.
Right. So we're reverting back to everything we've been doing, but that one were, it was different, right?
Because the middle school. Okay, got it.
Because we're, we're sticking with not aligning the, the high school and middle school schedules, right?
Okay. So that's why.
Start time.
Got it. Okay.
I'll take a motion then.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, Kathy?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Eye for me. Thank you. That does it for the minutes. Jim, do we have gifts and donations?
We do. So Planet Aid, $283.85 for miscellaneous gifts and donations. And wait, we're all in this together, $119.88 to the Ashland High School Student Council for total of $403.73.
Thank you. Any questions about that before we take a motion? Who's got the motion to accept the gifts and donations as stated?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor, Kathy?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Karen? Mark? And I for me, that passes. And then member updates. Who's got an update? Paul?
Does anybody have something before me or? Like I always, I always monopolize the updates. So.
I have a, I have a cute update.
We love cute updates. Let's hear it.
Cause Paul's aren't cute, but no, I'm just kidding. I said something on Facebook, the teacher, a teacher posted on Facebook just tonight that, um, I guess the Warren School had the, had an ice cream truck come to thank the teachers. And this teacher, she teaches remotely. So I think Pete and Kate brought her an ice cream and she was so thankful. She put it on Facebook. So I thought that was so cute of Pete and Kate to do that.
Ah, how thoughtful. Thank you. That's awesome. Anybody else before Paul?
I feel like there's something, but I, it's escaping me at the moment. So I'll just pass for now.
You, you were just on the reality fair.
Talk to me about that, Paul. Tell me how that went.
You're only on as long as I was. So.
About 29 minutes. Yeah.
Yeah. So let's see, I'm trying to remember what, what the last updates were. So we have a meeting next week for the building committee. We're going to be going over our design development estimates, value of engineering lists and, and things like that. We've reached out, started communication with the neighbors. We sent out, we, I thank you to Karen who helped send out, I think, 54 letters for us to, we sent out email or not email, we sent out regular mail to a butters within a 30, a 300-foot radius to start a conversation just around introductions to the project team, the CM and, and those conversations. So we're, we're scheduling that for later this, this month. And yeah, that's, uh, that's about it. We're, we're, we're steamrolling ahead. The, the project team's doing a lot of work on the design and, and yeah, so things are moving right along still, so far on schedule and we'll have more, you know, in the weeks to come. Did I miss anything, Jim?
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else before we, we're going to be moving to go into executive session and not returning? So we're good before we do that? Okay. I'm going to make the motion again to enter into executive session under section 21A3 to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares and I so declare, and not to return to open session. And this is regarding the Ashland Educators Association, ESP contract, nurses contract, administrative assistant contract and Ashland custodian and maintenance contract. So I will take a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. And then roll call vote. Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
An eye for me as well. You guys have a separate link somewhere. We're going to another link for that meeting. Thank you. All the rest of you who were here.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah. Have a good one. We'll see you later.
Thank you very much.
Night. Thank you.